Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of April. We appreciate everybody that is here with us in our council chambers and those of you watching this on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight would be given by Councilman Don Chapman and our respects to the flag would be given by Mayor Pro Tem Buck Roberts. Please rise.
Before we pray, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in respect of the tragic events that occurred this past week in Boston and in West Texas. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. Be with our city's public safety personnel, both police and fire. We ask that you keep them safe as they serve to protect our community. As with this and every day, we give thanks for the men and women and want to remember all the men and women past and present who protect us and this country, our freedoms, so that it is possible for us to gather here tonight. Give us guidance now as we conduct this meeting. May all we say and do be mindful of our citizens, but most of all, be positive in your eyes. We ask this in all things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of things before we get into the body of our meeting. I'm gonna ask Chief Horn to come up. He's got a couple of recognitions for his firefighters. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, city manager. During our previous meeting, we introduced our new life-saving award program and we had one firefighter receive it during the previous meeting. Tonight, we're gonna catch up. We've got two more saves that we want to recognize firefighters for. I'd like to call up Sergeant Paul McGah and firefighter Curtis Rackster. Paul and Curtis, this one on January 20th, 2013, Fire Station 3 received a call to a cardiac arrest at number one Springback Way. The two of you arrived, the male subject was in full cardiac arrest. Y'all started CPR on the subject and shocked the subject with AED. When the subject was transported, he already had a pulse and was breathing on his own. So, your actions directly related to the life being saved. So, on behalf of the City of Anderson and the Anderson Fire Department, I'd like to present you with a certificate of commendation for actions that contributed to saving a Curtis? Also, we have a ribbon that from this day forward will be placed on your Class A uniforms. We gotta keep Paul up there, you're not gonna believe this. Okay, I'd like to call up firefighter Chris Corley and this is Sergeant Paul McGah again. On January 27th, this is one week after the first call that they had their save, Fire Station 1 received a call to a cardiac arrest at 819 Dora Street. When they arrived, the subject was in full cardiac arrest again. Sergeant McGah and firefighter Corley started CPR on the subject. The subject was shocked again. This subject started breathing and regained a pulse. This was directly related to the actions of Sergeant McGah and firefighter Chris Corley. So Sergeant McGah is not gonna get another ribbon, but he will get another certificate. And on behalf of the City of Anderson and Anderson Fire Department, I'd like to present you with a certificate of commendation for actions that contributed to saving a life.
Thank you, sir.
And also, we have a ribbon that you'll wear on your Class A uniform from this day forward.
Great job. Proud to have you, great job. Proud to have you, great job.
Chief, Stuart, would you come up, sir? We have a proclamation that I'd like to read and I'm gonna get Chief to say a few words after I read it. The proclamation is for National Police Week. The proclamation reads, "Whereas National Police Week has been designated to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Anderson Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in being killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Anderson Police Department. And whereas the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Office Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 31 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 119 officers killed in 2012 and 201 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty would be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial funds, 25th Annual Candlelight Visual on the evening of May 13th, 2013. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas therefore now I, Terrence B. Roberts, along with my fellow city council members, do hereby proclaim May the 12th through the 18th, 2013, as National Police Week. In the City of Anderson and publicly salutes the services of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation." Chief?
I'd like to thank Mayor, council, city manager for recognizing this day, this special day that each year that we take time apart to recognize those who gave service to our city, county, and state here in this state. And as the horrific events occurred in Boston over the past week, that list has went to 32 names this year. So, the date that the mayor advised, May 13th, we will be having a ceremony at the Anderson County Square. Everyone is invited and I would invite the public to attend. Thank you.
The minutes of our April 8th minutes have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? The minutes of April 8th, 2013 pass unanimously. Having no old business, we'll move directly into new business. Now, first item of new business is to request consideration or referral to the planning commission, a petition to rezone 1502 Bab Street and 2009 through 2015 Bryson Street from R-15 Single Family Residential to R-5 Single Family Residential. Mr. McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. If this is a referral to the planning commission, the upcoming meeting is on May 7th, but if you look at the map at the corner of Bab and Bryson, there are five houses, they're actually on one lot. The applicant basically wants to subdivide that into five lots, that would make it conforming. Nothing will be changing on the ground and the proposed zoning of R-5 would meet the setbacks for that if it is subdivided into those five lots. But again, the request is to refer this to the planning commission on May 7th.
Any questions, Mr. McKenzie?
Make a motion, we refer it to the planning commission.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Our next item is request consideration to purchase a sewer vacuum jetting truck.
I'm gonna have to get some help tonight, I'm sorry, my allergies are acting up, but as Jeff comes down, let me, I can make a couple of comments. The first two items, we're requesting the proceeds of the 2009 bond that built the Rocky River Plant, basically. It was a $26 million bond. It had a million dollar contingency in it, so the contingency was not spent, plus we came in about $400,000 under the budget. So, there's 1.4 million left in those bond proceeds. A few meetings ago, you spent, authorized a spending of $220,000, if you remember, to redo that liner at the plant. And so, what we're proposing here is in two items, $330,000, $294 for the low bid for the vac-all, and the next item is another $40,000 for an incentive pump replacement program. And I'll let Jeff talk about the specifics, but I will share with you, the low bidder on the truck and the vac-all is Vaccon. It's a freight liner truck, which is currently what we use. The Vaccon is the 91 and the 2001 models, so we have a lot of experience with them. They've been pretty successful. And again, I'll go ahead and then I'll stop. As far as, I'm gonna kinda talk a little bit about the other, the pumps. We spend approximately the $40,000 a year on pumps and the scum pumps at the plants, and so they're giving us a special offer to buy these pumps, which are the better performers we have. And so, we're gonna use the bond proceeds to buy these from the two low bids. And Jeff, you wanna add anything to that? I did a little better and thought of it.
Yeah, I think that was good.
Sorry.
Any additional questions in regards to the purchase of the equipment?
Well, clarification, these are items that we would have had to do sooner or later anyway, and so they're kinda like normal routine items over time, and we're just using this money because it's available.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Curvin. I did get a chance to talk to him earlier in the week, he called, or today. And out of the 1.4 million, there's still 850,000 left. And what my, our commitment to you is, two things, that we have the budget work sessions coming up in about three weeks, so we'll address that 850. You can do one of two things. There is a process, you can't prepay the bonds because they have call dates, but you can go through a process to what they call defees the bonds. It's maybe more expensive, not worth it, but we'll explore that. Option two could be to look, and Jeff will bring with him, the five-year capital plan. Those are a lot of line replacements, it's lift station work, it could be equipment, and this might be an opportunity to put you yourselves a little ahead in the water and sewer areas. But we'll address that in about three weeks. And I don't think we have any more, the thing will come back between now and then, that you would need to look at that 850. So, we're still 850 in bond proceeds available, and this is, as Mr. Curvin says, these would have been in this budget, in your capital replacements anyway.
In the next year budget? That were not budgeted this year, but possibly-
These were actually in this year's budget.
In this year's budget.
Yeah, that'll keep us that much further under.
As far as the budget, anything else, anybody else?
It's just one vehicle though, right?
Yes. It's a big one.
Yeah. Make a motion, we accept item B-12 as presented.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Harbin. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. And John has already talked about the detailed items in the third request. Any other questions in regards to that?
I might've said B-12 instead of B-2.
B-2, B-3.
Feel better about it, don't you?
Yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Harbin.
What do these sludge pumps, sludge and scum pumps do?
The sludge pumps are pumps that pump the sludge that settles out the clarifier over to the digesters to be digested and then go to our sludge press and then are land-applied. The scum pump is what comes off the top of the clarifier that won't settle.
And these are items that have to be replaced periodically through, from wear and tear?
Yeah.
Can you tell us, can you give us a little information about why this is a good thing to do now?
The, these are pumps, that these are replacing, do have to be replaced every 12 to 18 months. They have to be repaired every 12 to 18 months, and the cost of the repair is what we're getting the new pump for. It is a incentive program from the manufacturer Vogel Sane, and we do have one in service that we've had for about 10, a little over 10 years at Genesee that's given us good service. We did specify this pump for the Rocky River upgrade. We got the low bid pump and it has just not functioned to our satisfaction. Thank you.
I think, I would answer a little bit, add to that. Number one, this pump has been the most successful out of the two plants as far as productivity. But again, back to what, I can't pronounce her name, Vogel Sane said is, rather than spend $3,000 rebuilding the other pumps, we'll put you new ones in for the same price as a part of an incentive program. And again, the advantage to them is that they're getting all their pumps, which were the low bid on the second plant, not the first one. So, a lot of these are replacing ones at the, they're both plants, but mainly the ones at the first plant.
Mr. Roberts?
Jeff, these things run 24 hours a day though, don't they?
Not exactly 24, I mean, they do get a sludge blanking on the bottom of those clarifiers and it's done off of a head pressure.
What, about 12 hours each a day or something like that?
Something like that, yeah.
Pretty good wear and tear.
The more, the more sludge, the more flow we have, the more they'll work.
Mr. Chapman?
Are they warranted? Are they, are the-
Yes, these come, these come with their standard, there's a one-year manufacturer defect warranty, and then I think it's prorated over a certain period after that. I'm not sure exactly what that period is.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Make a motion, we approve this purchase.
First by Mr. Harbin, second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Your toys always cost a whole lot of money. Our last item is request consideration on waterline extension contract with WNH Construction to provide fire protection service. Mr. Moore?
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'll let Jeff help me in just a second, but the bottom line is, you may remember the Murphy Express that was annexed a few meetings ago. We have two options to get water to them. We've chosen to run down the right-of-way versus come off the 28 bypass to save a lot of DOT now if you disrupt traffic and make you work at night. So, Jeff and those evaluated two processes, this one was less expensive. We'll actually run the line under their concrete to their far side, so we'll be, the city will be in a position that has other properties annexing, want to tag on to the line, and a lot of those are undeveloped down through there. We'll be proactive on that standpoint. But the bottom line is you're awarding a low bid, and we've sort of broken this bid out. Number one, Jeff and his staff specified materials they would like in the pipe, I mean in the line, ductile iron pipe, 24-inch. We'll buy that for $14,620, and then the contractor to put it in would be WNH Construction of Anderson, $11,825. So, the total price on that is about $26,000. The developer is actually part of the fees and all, the developer's paying, is paying $21,486. So, the water line basically extended, the only cost to the city would be $4,958.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chapman?
I just had a question. What do you think is the main reason for the large discrepancy in the two types versus the-
Yeah, I imagine they understood the bid documents and what we were providing. Possibly they may not have understood that we provided the material or didn't take that in consideration. Possibly they just maybe didn't need the work or-
Okay. Do you have, do you have experience with this company?
This company, as I understand it, is a partner company with West Utilities, same crews and everything, so.
They never done any work here before?
Not, it's a, I think it's a minority-owned business part of West Utilities.
But you've worked with West Utilities?
Yes.
And the discrepancy between the, those bids, we're not expecting huge change orders because those are the, I guess, similar companies?
Yes.
Okay.
And they do provide payment and performance bonds on this work or not?
They did, they, they will not provide payment bonds because they're not buying any material but performance bonds and CD business license and also insurance certificates.
Any other questions?
I move that we extend this contract, does that be an HNH Construction?
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Stewart. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move right into, I'm gonna pull out here the big old page. Minister, briefing? Mr. Moore?
I think I'll ask Chief Stewart, if he's still here, if he'll come down the podium and kinda help me here. But the bottom line is, Chief Stewart and his staff applied for a federal grant for the Pria Coordinator, and this is a Prison Rape Elimination Act, something that's been in the works for about 10 years, and finally has legislation to move it forward. They were successful in getting $40,577 for the grant, which will provide salary and fringe benefits for the coordinator. Again, it is a federal mandate, we need to do it. I've had a couple of questions from council, is this something you can do within the current staff? Jim can, can add to this, but the bottom line is that we don't believe so with the current detention staff. What we've tried to do is, is prisoners need to be called to federal court, we gotta be available. There are times that you have some extras or floaters, but they have to be available to take people to the federal courts, they have to be available to take prisoners to medical facilities, and this eliminates us pulling officers off the street to do that within-house. That's just one of the things I would mention. I'm gonna let Jim mainly tell you, what does this person really do? What does this really mean in terms of the detention facility? There's a lot of paperwork in the first year, we'll certainly evaluate what that will look like as we go through the year, and what, once the grant expires, assuming it won't be renewed, there are some other options that may be available. This will get us the first year, make sure we're in compliance. It is really important to us due to the, about 1.25 million federal, US Marshals program that we keep. So, Jim, you wanna talk about what this person will actually do and what this Pria actually is?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. It's gonna be a programmatic job function more than a hands-on. This person's gonna be doing an awful lot of paperwork, basically writing new general orders for us. The city is already equipped with some of the standards. We have standards for our investigators to investigate any type of sexual assault that would occur in the jail, detention center, or out on the road. We follow the same protocols. This person's gonna be responsible, will have to have the specific skills instructor at the Criminal Justice Academy. They'll have to teach all our officers here in classrooms regarding sexual assault, training, protocols, policy to all our Class 1 and Class 2 officers. And basically, when we filled out the questionnaire for this job, we filled out about a 100-page questionnaire. Myself and Lieutenant Carpenter, out of that questionnaire, we probably followed about 33% of that. As far as applying for the grant, that's what we wrote in the grant, was nearly about a 100-page application also. It is an optional position, but since we operate a federal detention center, it's not optional for us. It's mandatory. This is connected to any federal funding that the City of Anderson would receive, and that could be decreased if we did not start the Prison Rape Elimination Act guidelines. Well, just to let you know too, we are up for audit. It could be as early as August of this year. The position, we posted it within-house and have a qualified individual that can handle this job within our own facility.
Any other questions?
I do.
Mr. Curvin?
Let me make sure I understand, Chief, this, this act has certain requirements that we have to fulfill. The act itself doesn't dictate that we hire somebody to do this, is that correct?
You are correct, and that's what Mr. Moore was referring to. And on the day shift personnel that work pretty much 8 to 5, a normal schedule, those folks are just four people, and those individuals are usually on the road, either here in Anderson standing, when we transport our federal prisoners, they still have to stand by most of the time. They're either in Anderson, Greenville, or Spartanburg. At any given time, we're housing 70 to 80 federal inmates here.
Well, and I understand that, and I don't wanna cut you off, but my real question is that if this grant is not renewed after the first year, are you prepared to eliminate this position?
I would try to strongly twist your arm to keep it, but if we're not able to find this next year, we would absorb it within-house. That's not up for discussion, we would have to do that to maintain.
Well, this is a position that, you know, this person can do a lot of work in a year's time.
Miss Ma.
As you pointed out, get us on the right track, that if we were not able to hire the second year, that you at least know what you're supposed to be doing. I think it's a good, I think it's a good grant.
Miss Ma. Any other questions, comments?
I move that we accept this grant.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you. I think that's something that we always struggle with is grant money and it going away and having to make changes or absorb things, and we've seen that happen in our fire department a lot too. So, I'm sure we'll evaluate it and come to a decision next year. Upcoming events, Mr. Moore?
A couple of things. Wednesday of this week, downtown committee will be meeting. We anticipate two items on the agenda. One will be a program regarding Anderson University's location downtown. Number two will be regarding the streetscape for the new downtown park. So, that agenda should go out tomorrow and also to the public. Then on, in May, we have a lot more in May, but one of the big things that you know about is, I guess, Linda Sokka is the award on the 3rd public, Turner Award?
Yes.
Okay. On Friday the 3rd, there'll be Art on the Town. On Friday, the 3rd, there'll be Art on the Town, the Vernon Award Celebration, and then also to cap the evening off, West Side Community Center Gala. And then if you look on down, just a couple of things, the week I mentioned, three weeks away, that'd be May 13, 15, 16. I think you may be holding those dates for lunch for a budget overview session, and then we have the Diversity Leadership Awards Dinner in Greenville on the 23rd. Of course, the Block Party runs every Thursday night, weather permitting. So those are the things we have on the calendar coming up.
I noticed that, uh, there's nothing on here about our groundbreaking of the cemetery, Westview Cemetery, tomorrow at 10:00. Would Linda say a little something about that?
We can.
Okay.
Love the Westview Cemetery.
Groundbreaking tomorrow at 10:00.
Groundbreaking tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
10:00 AM, thank you, Dr. Thompson, at Westview Cemetery. We are happy to invite the public to this. It will be, as, as many of you know, certainly, we have no more grave spaces available in Westview, so the groundbreaking for this next phase will mean that we can have grave sites available for people, land that we already owned in the cemetery, and this is a good opportunity to increase our availability of spaces so that family members can continue to revere these places for their loved ones.
1,200 more spaces, I did get a chance to ride through today, all the lands clear, ready, as you've seen, Dr. Thompson, so it does look nice. We'll have for you also the brochures that we put out to all the local funeral homes at these sites will be available, and so we're already getting requests.
The good thing, because as you know, this is primarily a minority grave site. And a lot of minorities like to be buried at Westview.
Absolutely.
And so we ran out of space, and so we needed to add more grave sites, and it's going to be nice, I think. Appreciate you moving forward with that.
The other thing we didn't get on the calendar, but I think that we've asked you to hold the date, too, I don't think it's on here, but is also a really big event for the community, May 31st, I think it's around lunch is the...
We'll finalize it later.
Yeah, the ribbon cutting for Lindley, so appreciate y'all all being there for the first pitch Tuesday night. A lot of good things, facility-wise, are coming down the pipe.
Good.
Mayor, that's all we have. We do need a few minutes, and I promise we will be short, right? This is city attorney. We have three lawsuits, Star IVA Water Sewer District versus City of Anderson, like the update on, West Anderson Water Sewer District versus City of Anderson, like the update on, and also an economic development dispute, Bill Epstein versus City of Anderson. So we could adjourn to the jury room, we'll tell you where we are on those, and like again, we'll be brief.
Thank you, sir. Before we have a motion to go into executive session, we have a young man out here who's doing scout work, I'm sure, trying to get some, some of his requirements done. What's your name, son?
Marcus Wood.
What troop are you from?
215.
215, we welcome you here. Good luck. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move.
First by the Mayor Pro Tim, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We stay in executive session.